The stress and spending money and all that that's leading that happens at the holiday. I like everything else about the holiday. I like the Christmas lights. I like Christmas songs. I like the, I like.
Look at her.
You're glowing.
I like the twinkly lights.
You're glowing. You look like a little kid the night before Christmas thinking Santa Claus is coming.
Because everybody who hates Christmas is a bah humbug.
No, no, it's not.
They're cotton headed ninnymuggin. They're cotton headed ninnymuggin. I love Christmas.
What?
I cotton headed ninnymuggins.
Did you make that up right now?
It's from Elf. I stole that from Elf.
Oh my, oh my, okay.
I stole that line from Elf. Anybody who hates Christmas is a cotton headed ninnymuggin.
My favorite Will Ferrell movie is The Campaign and yours is Elf. That just says something right there.
I love, I love Christmas just because I like the twinkly lights. I like the.
I do like those. I do. I like sweater weather.
I know you like.
I like boots. I love my boots. I love my boots. I love boots. I love boots.
I do too, but it gets me too hot now.
I don't care. I'll wear them anyway. Hot flash, be darned. I have to tell you, I just am like seriously, and there's too many close together. If I'm not buying tons of candy to pass out to cute little children, which is sweet, I guess, and their costumes, and I had fun doing it.
I love Halloween too. I love fall.
Thanksgiving and then it's Christmas. And what are you gonna bring to Thanksgiving? And how many places are you gonna go eat? I would like to boycott and I would like to have pizza and tequila and um just chill.
You can boycott if you want. But I'm, I'm fairly certain that Jackie's gonna make you wear matching Christmas pajamas this year, just like always.
I know.
My parents, because I still spend the night at my parents' house like I was a child.
I know.
Wake up Christmas morning at my parents' house and we wear matching Christmas pajamas.
Tell everyone what you do every Christmas Eve at your parents' house every Christmas Eve.
Well, I only really.
What your sister does.
I only realized this and she'll love that I'm adding this. I only realized this a few years ago when I woke up in the middle of her doing it because I thought she was shouting at me and standing over me and waving her arms. It scared me. But every year she recites 'twas the night before Christmas from memory.
And it's not just like normal.
She does it for the kids. She plays the keyboard. She acts it out. She does it every year. So now, since it's so funny, I have to be awake to see it, but I, my kids told me she's been doing it every year since they were really little.
You slept through it?
I slept through it, but I woke up in the recliner at my parents' house scared to death. I thought she was screaming at me. I'm like, what's happening? I don't know what's happening. Why is she screaming at me? But it was her reciting the um.
Was she drunk?
No, no, I don't.
She, no, actually, your sister has a beautiful voice and she has a very, she's really good at the artsy stuff.
Yeah, so anyway, that was.
I think we should come up with our own. I think maybe.
Come up with our own tradition.
I think if, maybe I'd like it better if we came up with one, a silly one. Like, I don't know, beat up people's inflatables in their yard.
Nothing we can get arrested for because I only get one expungement in a lifetime. But we need to come up with our own quirky, silly holiday rituals. We can do Friendsgiving and we can eat chocolate as our main course. We could do our own, we said that every year we wanted to do Friendsgiving.
I just want less stress, you know?
I agree.
Like, I have a Christmas list too. Don't you love Christmas lists? You wanna hear what's on mine?
What's on yours?
Um, fifteen million dollars.
Okay.
Um, I would like stupid people to stop talking. A Caribbean vacation.
Okay.
I wanna go to Prague too.
I know, you've said that for like fifteen years now.
I need somebody to buy me a pair of red bottom shoes, okay? It can be a group of people. I know they're not cheap, but at some point before I die, I need a pair.
All right.
Okay?
I'll have to think about my Christmas list.
Yeah, do that. I'm gonna get you a signed copy of the Elf movie.
I love that.
I know. What is that word again?
Cotton headed ninnymuggins. Cotton headed ninnymuggins.
I'll get them a sign for you.
Yes. All right, so now we've gotta get serious because Anthony Sabatini is on today and we have to get serious about the conversation with him. I have to say, I was not thrilled at first because I don't know what to expect and I don't know what to ask that we hasn't already been asked of a political person.
And I know, and you know I'm friends with Anthony. So, I mean, we know each other.
So it's gonna be fine.
But he, you know, we're.
And I'm excited to go to see what he's gonna say.
And he's probably gonna have really good answers. He's a really smart guy, so.
So I'm, I think it's gonna be a good interview.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Style Podcast sponsored today by Disability Consultants and Lake Center Home Care. Joining us today is Anthony Sabatini. I feel like Anthony needs no introduction. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
It's great to be here. Thank you.
We wanted to have a normal conversation with you today, not just a political talk. We wanted to get to know Anthony Sabatini a little bit because the Anthony Sabatini that we, that we know, you've had a lot of different hats in your thirty-six years. So tell us a little bit about what's going on with Anthony Sabatini these days.
Well, I'm very happy to be a newly elected county commissioner. So today was my first meeting, so very, very privileged and happy to have the opportunity to serve my county where I've lived pretty much my whole life. I moved to Lake County when I was about a year and a half old, and so I went to Eustis Heights, Eustis Middle, Eustis High. When Lake County's population was a hundred and forty-two thousand people, today it's four hundred and thirty-six thousand people.
It's crazy. Isn't it crazy?
It's totally insane. And of course, that important fact is gonna inform a lot of, you know, decisions I make as a county commissioner, just like I did in, when I was a Eustis City Commissioner and to a degree when I was a state representative. So just very happy. That's where the big exciting thing for me right now. You know, I'm still running my law firm with my wife Francesca and busy doing that. And just really excited to be back in a local role because I love Lake County very much and my goal is to make it better than when I found it, which is very hard to do.
You said you moved here when you were about a year and a half old. I always like to ask people, how in the world did you find, did your parents find Lake County? What, of everywhere they could have moved, why did they find Lake County?
It's a great story, actually. So it was my parents and my grandparents. So my grandparents were Long Islanders, Italians. All my grandparents are immigrants. They all were born in Italy and Germany. So very late American immigrants and they moved to New York from other countries. And then in nineteen eighty-seven, they had restaurants in Long Island and they had a friend who had moved to this town called Mount Dora. And so they came down and they looked around, and this is a true story. They looked around and within two days, they called my mom, who was twenty-one at the time, and said, we're selling everything in New York. We're moving to this town in Lake County. And you should come to. And my mom was like, whoa, what's going on? And I was just born and I had an older brother. And that's what they did. My grandparents sold their restaurants. They came down, they bought restaurants. They bought the, bought the park bench, if you remember the park bench in Mount Dora.
I didn't know that.
So for ninety thousand dollars, those were the real estate prices in Mount Dora back there. You won't see that anymore.
That was prior to, I'm sure that you're familiar with the history of the movie that was filmed downtown Mount Dora.
Yeah, of course. Honky Tonk Freeway.
Yeah, and they painted the entire town pink with the idea that as long as they gave them enough to like redo it after they left.
Sure. Yes, so my grandparent, they bought that. They bought three buildings downtown and they bought JB Clubhouse. They started that, if you remember that. That's my grandparents, yeah.
Are you related to Frankie?
Yeah, it's my uncle.
Frankie's your uncle?
Yeah.
I love Frankie. Yes, actually, funny story. Would you like to know where my husband and I met? They always say you can't meet somebody in a bar. We met at the clubhouse and Frankie was the bartender and at the time so was Jill. Yes.
Of course.
It's not that anymore. Now it's like a storefront or something. That's hilarious. I did not know Frankie was your.
But I brought that up because of what you said about Honky Tonk Freeway, which is when the town was still pink, my grandma was one of the first people to start painting it other colors. And and it, this is a hilarious quote. I remember it from my youth. It was the first time I saw my family on TV, my grandma. I was four years old and she was being interviewed. She was painting the JB Clubhouse green and orange, but like a, like a nice color, not too loud. But this, but the town was pink, so really that shouldn't have been considered a controversial thing. And the town was already pink. But I remember this older guy in like West Channel Two saying, this is Mount Dora, not Mount Disney. We won't stand for this. We don't need all these loud colors. Meanwhile, the, the town was pink, which is hilarious. But anyway, so they, they moved down and I came to and of course I went to public school here. Went to University of Florida for college and law school, moved out of state for a little while between those two things. And that's when I really missed Florida and missed Lake County when I moved up to New York City. And I was like, wow, like, we don't know how lucky we are. You know, because when you leave is when you really.
Right.
See how special this place is. And so I did, I came back, went to finish law school and moved right back to Lake County. At the time, I didn't know I was gonna come right back to where I grew up. I knew I'd be somewhere in Florida. But I had the opportunity to run for city commission while I was in law school and I did that and then state house and now county commission. So that's sort of my story.
Okay, so while we're talking about the county commission, congrats. You know, I, you know, I've always been a supporter. When you were running against Webster at the time, I was, you know, I texted you. I was like, hey, I need a sign. And then you, you know, everything went down with that and you switched to the county commission election or the, you know, running for that. So now word on the street and you can, you know, is now that the Trump administration is picking cabinet, picking people, they've tapped Walz. Is that you're interested in his seat.
Walz, by the way, not Waltz. Walz was the guy who lost the VP.
I said Walz.
Well, Walz is the, the bad candidate for VP who just got stomped.
Listen, listen.
Santa would not mistake them.
You want me to do the Trump dance for you? We can do it at the same time. Because that's one thing I can promise we agree on.
Similar to their names.
Yeah. So are you interested in his?
I don't know. Let me tell you this. Since I first held an office, which was student body president at Eustis High School in two thousand and six, I've never really planned to, to, to run for one thing or another. I just, if there's an opportunity to serve and I'm dissatisfied with those people who are enlisted for that position, then I decide to run. And so I ran for county commission because I thought I could do a better job than the occupant. If somebody really good I like runs for the Michael Walt seat, I probably won't run. I asked Kerry Baker to run. He said no. I think he would do an outstanding job, but he does not.
How will it work? Let me ask you that. How does it work? It's not appointed? There'll be a special election for it?
It's a good question. So, and there's a lot of confusion about this. So US Senate, if there's a resignation, it's an automatic appointment.
Okay.
So Rubio will be appointed by the governor as soon as he's gone, which will be January twentieth. Congress is always a special election. But the governor has wide discretion on when he wants to call it. He can call it very quickly. He can call it longer. Some people say it's gonna be at least a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty days. That's for the primary. Then you got two more months to the general, then when they get seated. So honestly, even though this sounds like this is happening at breakneck speed, the race for Walt's seat probably won't start until the beginning of next year and won't be seated until the summer. So honestly, I'm not, I put out a statement saying I'm interested in running for it, but right now, obviously, there's.
So you wouldn't just, you know, like vacate the spot?
What happens? Yeah, what happens to your?
Even if I wanted to run, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vacate till probably mid to late summer.
And then how would they pick your, are they, do they pick your replacement?
The governor chooses. So under Florida's constitution, the governor replaces any county commissioner if they resign or die or any, anything else happens. So we'll see. But I don't know what happens. We don't even know what the field looks like. There's, there's been ten or nine or ten names, including mine, that have been thrown out, but I don't, I don't know who runs. Like I said, if somebody really, I really like runs, I wouldn't run for that. I would continue to be on the county commission. But you know, there's just opportunities arise and you have to take a look at them. I was the city commissioner in Eustis. There was an open state house seat. I listened to what the two candidates who both had raised quite a bit of money were saying. And I said, these people don't reflect my values. And I don't think that they're very strong convicted confrontational leaders, which is what I think we need. I think we need confrontational courageous leaders. I hate wimpy, pushover people who just sit around.
And tell you what you wanna hear.
Well, they just, they, they don't, they're not agents of change. They just get acted upon. They react to things. They don't actually push for anything. And so for that reason, I ran for state house. I wouldn't have done it if somebody else was very good in that race. In fact, I tried to recruit one or two people to run and they said no. And that's of course what always happens. I'm the chairman of the Lake County Republican Party too. It's another hat I wear and I'm constantly trying to recruit new people to run for office. It's impossible to get people to run. And if I see that, you know, I can't get somebody I really like to run for something, I'm, I'm interested in running for that, so.
It's impossible to get people to run because of how the system is, what it's turned into and how ugly it gets.
It's so true.
So I think that's what, that's what.
It's always been that way.
It has always been that way, but I think we're in a more visible time now and because of social media, because everybody's walking around with a camera in their hand. So that is, that's a challenge. So what do you do as the chairman of the Republican Party? How do you get people, good qualified people that aren't gonna get annihilated over small things?
You just work harder to try to persuade people.
I think you have to find brave people too. You have to find people that are, stand in their convictions that say, I'm sick of the same old, same old thing. The same people that are sitting in office that try to, no matter what the people vote for, what their mandate, they want their mandate to be. Reform, really, I'd like to call it a reckoning come next year because that's what happened in November is we said we were done and we're sick of it. But now you've got the rumor mill going on, what's going on in the US Senate for the people that are gonna try to stop the confirmation of, or they are.
Yeah.
Your Mitch McConnells and people like that.
Yeah.
And so I think that's, honestly, I think it's people like that that scare other people because you'd really have to, you have to have a certain backbone to stick up to that type of good old boy network.
It's true. It's true. But to answer your question, you know, what do you do? I mean, just try to build a rolodex and encourage people to run. Also give them realistic, um, realistic knowledge of what it's like being in office because people think it's like sixty, seventy hours a week and politicians love to be like, I'm working all day, every day. And that discourages other people from wanting to run in local or state politics because they think, well, I can't work. I don't have a life. I can't do this.
Right.
And that's just not true. You can work five or ten or twenty hours a week and have enormous results. It's not a full-time job. You can still be, you know, whatever. You can run your business. You can be a lawyer, whatever, and still do it. Secondly, you're right. People, they will dig up things and try to make you look bad, but all that just is sort of ignored by the public now. We're living in the, like the Trump era where like, yeah, they're gonna like bring up bad things about you, but like no one really cares. The, like, people don't really care. What they really care is that they like you and they like you if they think that you're like, you know, an authentic person. And that's all that really matters. And so they shouldn't be discouraged to run. But it happens all the time. I recruited a guy to run for state house a couple of years ago in Volusia County and they found like every, you know, ticket he ever had and he had, you know, some run ins.
They blow everything out of proportion. So that's what I mean. How do you, because no, it seems like no sane person will wanna subject themselves to that because you're like, I can't answer for everything I've, I've done in my life, even things that you did when you were younger or silly or a child. You know what I mean? And I'm, I'm talking college and high school would be considered a child to me. But you know what I mean? But they bring up everything and they try to make it as ugly as they can. And you're like, who wants to do that? So I think it limits us. It gets us, it limits our field and our options.
Yeah, it, it's harder to convince people to run for office now. But, you know, and part of that's technology. Because, you know, everything's recorded, everything's digitized, you're surveilled all the time. So they'll decontextualize whatever you've said or done and try to make you look bad. But you know, the stakes are high and there's a lot of good patriotic people in this country. And so we still obviously have a lot of good people running for office. But it is something that when you're trying to recruit people to run for office, it's a major obstacle for sure.
We're gonna take just a quick break and we'll be back in just a moment to hear more from Anthony Sabatini.
Get all the social security disability benefits you deserve with disability consultants Chris Bell and Jeff Bell. Our experienced Florida certified ADR handle claims on a contingency fee basis, meaning you don't pay unless we recover money for you. We have established a strong reputation as a firm that cares and provides the best care to its clients. Call us today or visit cbell.com.
Welcome back. We're here with Anthony Sabatini. Today we're sponsored by Disability Consultants and Lake Center Home Care. Anthony, during the break, we were talking a little bit about your time in the military. So tell us a little bit about that. You're still in, right?
Yeah, so I joined the guard when I was nineteen. I became an officer in two thousand and twelve when I graduated law school or college, commissioned into the Florida Armory National Guard. So it's crazy to think, but I've been in fourteen years as an officer. I'm sorry, twelve years as an officer, which is insane. It just flies by. I'm a captain. I run, I'm the assistant S-three, which means I help plan operations for one of the brigades in the state. And I've responded to twelve hurricanes. I've worked one of the presidential inaugurations. I've done all types of stuff, civil, civil unrest, all different types of fun experiences. And it's been great and I love it. And I'm still in.
Are you one of the people we see at the Armory downtown in Leesburg every now and then?
I was a member of Alpha Company at one point for about a year, right when I moved back to Florida. When I left the state for a while, came back and, and I was there. And then Charlie Company in Ocala, but now I'm in a different brigade, which actually is in Tallahassee.
Okay.
So it's quite a drive, but it's a good, it's a good unit.
Did you have to help out recently with hurricanes that we've had?
All three. Yeah, I was, I was deployed for at least thirty days off and on for those three because it was like a small tropical storm, which almost had capped one and then two more serious ones. So yeah, it was wild.
It is wild.
Yeah, this was, you know, supposed to be the biggest since two thousand and four in terms of hurricane season.
Yeah, that was a crazy year too. I just had my daughter. I mean, literally. And then it was back, I had a newborn back to back to back. It was like one after the other. It's crazy.
Yeah, I remember two thousand and four. I was clearing debris at my neighbor's home on Lakeford Drive in Eustis where I grew up. And somebody took a picture and it was the first time I made the front page of the Daily Commercial. It was a fourteen-year-old moving debris.
Have you been on the front page since then for anything?
Well, you know, it's funny when the commercial was still very localized here with the local staff and everything, I made all types of, I was always on the front page. And Tom McNiff or whoever was always like interviewing me and there'd be editorials attacking things I did or praising things I did. But now, of course, it's sad, but a lot of our local and regional papers are being consolidated, centralized, and they don't have the local flavor they used to. And we're lucky we even have a local paper, but it's, you know, as you know, the context.
That front page was why a lot of people picked that paper up because that was the part that connected everybody to what was going on locally.
It's really sad. It actually is really strange.
I kinda miss, I kinda miss the print stuff, the paper, being able to touch it and see it and feel it. Now, we don't have the time nowadays to read everything, but.
I think two people are finding, and I know that Anthony, you might agree, I think people are looking to other sources for their news. Over the past few years, especially it's, I'd say probably, I don't know, it's been going on a while. You know, a lot of people, their first inclination is just to turn on the television. I actually had not watched television news in four years up until, it was, the last time I watched it was the twenty twenty election, the night of that one. And I was so furious with what was going on. And I refuse to turn it back on until this election. But I think too, I've just realized there's so much in the mainstream media that I don't fully think we get the full picture. Whereas if you can get on, you know, independent news sources or, you know, like your Charlie Kirks and your O'Keefe's and things like that. So, I mean, how do you feel about that?
Well, I use a lot of alternative news. I know Charlie pretty well. I did a ten-day study institute with him three years ago. And yeah, I listen to all those podcasts and, and all that. But believe it or not, I still am a very traditional faithful consumer of the legacy news, which I think I get made fun of by my conservative friends because they're like, you really read the New York Times? You read the Sentinel? You read the Daily Commercial? I'm like, yeah, every single day I read them all. In fact.
I do that too.
I have, yeah, them delivered to my house. They stopped the front door delivery six months ago, but my mailbox every day is, I get them to my house. Because even though I have the alternative means, I still, I still hope and wish that our traditional newsprint journalism doesn't go away because they cover a lot of stories that don't get talked about, local stories and.
Your local ones do. Nationally though, I mean, it's for me, I think that's, I have an issue with it. I mean, there was just a piece out yesterday and I read it, there was a story in the Times, I think it was, was, been recently and it was all about, they have an issue with RFK Junior. And they were just trying to discredit his saying that in Canada, you know, Fruit Loops have this amount of ingredients, but here, and they were saying, actually, he's wrong because up there, yes, they use blueberry and carrots, but here we use, I can't even pronounce the words. Like, so for me, reading that and see, I was like, but you just kinda contradicted yourself. I think if I could see both sides instead of such a one-sided view, I'd have an easier time with it. But I think for me, it's just as easy to get online and figure it out for myself, do my own research.
I think the news needs to get back to be in the news. They need to state the facts and get rid of, because I think a lot of people don't understand when they're watching a news magazine or that it, that it can be an opinion piece. It's not necessarily a fax or they're listening to the person who's screaming the loudest. So it needs to be, people need to understand that I love newspapers in the day when, back years ago when I thought I was gonna be a journalist. I love newspapers, newspapers that sum it up, give you the facts, my, you know, that, that say, stick to the facts, stick to the basics. Don't embellish, don't describe, don't use adjectives, just report the facts. So like you, I'm still, I still like to read the newspaper. I still like to pick up the newspaper and read it and hopefully that they're targeting the, the things that are getting out the word that everything is the way it really is, not embellishing it or giving you the, but I, I know she's skeptical about that.
Skeptical? Not skeptical. I know.
You know what I mean?
My dad, I'm, I'm the daughter.
Your dad is a writer and he's a great newspaper writer. I love writing.
Does not write for a newspaper anymore.
But he used to.
Frank Stanfield. He did for years with the Sentinel and the Commercial. And my dad will be the first one to tell you, news is, yeah.
Yeah, Frank Stanfield's our dad.
News is not what it used to be.
No, it's not.
So you can, everybody can say, oh, you know, maybe they'll never, we're in a different time now. And we're in a time where the majority of the mainstream media is, um, they are echoing what they're being told to echo. And that until you get some more people like your Charlie Kirks, your O'Keefe's, and there's some others, and I will, I don't care if they're liberal even. I mean, I'm not, I don't agree with them, but if they're coming up with it on their own and not spewing something they're told to say or just the rhetoric that's been forced down their throat, then I'm good with it. But we don't have a lot of journalism going on at all right now in the journalistic fields.
No, I agree. I agree.
You're right. Yeah. And you pick up the paper and a lot of times they'll put the editorials on the front page now where you're like, wow.
Well, that's never happened before.
Never. It's only a few years old. It's a trend and it's dangerous and bad and.
Or they won't put something very important. Whereas I'll hear about something and I'll talk to people that religiously watch, you know, CBS Evening News or the Today Show or whatever they watch, and they haven't heard anything about it. And I was like, how have you not heard about this? But it doesn't fit the, you know, the narrative.
The fluffy kind of magazine kind of shows.
Yeah, that's why I only read Lake Style Magazine.
That was the correct answer, Anthony.
They actually probably have more news than some of these local.
Of course they do. No, I'm not kidding. I read.
Oh, yeah. They actually do have really good pieces.
They're long columns. I mean, yeah.
I mean, let's be honest, even watching the local weather can be difficult sometimes because it, it's become so.
Woke weather?
Well, not in woke weather. It's so like, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. So when the sky really does fall one day, we're not gonna, you know.
Very sensationalized.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna take another quick break and we'll be back with Anthony Sabatini in just a moment.
Nobody wants an aging family member who is unable to care for themselves to be home alone. Lake Center Home Care believes the best healing happens when you are most comfortable. The company provides exceptional personal care in the comfort and privacy of your own home. Whether you need skilled nursing, physical therapy, home health aides, or companion services, your loved ones will enjoy peace of mind knowing you're being taken care of and treated with respect and dignity. Lake Center Home Care is locally owned and managed with a team of highly qualified professionals who are passionate about taking care of their neighbors. Call three five two three one five zero zero five zero or visit go L C H C dot com to learn more about this amazing company.
Welcome back. We're here with Anthony Sabatini. Thanks for taking the time out of your day to come and visit with us. I wanted to ask you about the growth in Lake County. We know Lake County is exploding with growth. And what is the commission? You being on the commission, what are you doing? What's going on with that? And help people understand how the growth in, in Lake County is really working.
Sure. Well, today was my first meeting. There was no growth, no comp plan amendments, no, no development orders for growth to vote on. But my philosophy, which is informed by being a person from Lake County, when I was a kid, it was a hundred and forty thousand, now it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand. I want less growth. I want slow growth or in some cases, no growth when it comes to residential housing. I want commercial industrial development wisely executed, but I want basically way less residential growth in the county. And if there is gonna be some, I wanna try to encourage the cities to develop their in-lots and, and central areas, much more than the sprawl that, that is around the cities that the county does vote on. So I'll be voting no on a lot of those. So just to give you example, the Emerald, Emerald, I'm having a tough time saying it, Lakes, there was a big proposal for that. I'll be voting no on that. You know, there's, there's county projects that have been in the news in the last few months that I'm already against because I don't see how they bring any benefit to the people that are here already. But there probably will be some residential projects that I think are wisely executed or well done or don't have negative impacts for that region of the county that I'll vote up on. But right now, there's nothing in my very short future other, other than that.
How do we do that? How do we control, how do we convince the cities to control growth a little bit wiser?
You have to lobby them. You have to push them. You have to get involved in their elections to make sure that the people who are being elected have intelligent ideas about growth for the county and work with them and inform people of their power and decision-making. And you've seen that probably recently where county commissioners are like, look, the city has this annexation. I mean, we were talking about the media a little while ago. If it wasn't for the little tiny piece of local journalism that we have through the commercial, most people wouldn't even known about those very controversial development ideas that cities were able to play a role on. And Lady Lake and Flim Park, I think recently just voted down on one. But the county can play a role in educating county citizens about what is coming before the cities too. So we need to be a pulpit for that. So we can educate people to speak out against what they think is bad growth. You can also incentivize them. You can say, you know, we'll work with you to help develop the interior of your city versus the outside. And that's an unorthodox approach because most people would be like, well, does that even look like? But we need to be.
What does that look like?
I think it, I think it's sitting down, putting county staff to go to their land planning meetings and, and work with them on their comp plans to incentivize them, educate them. The biggest, not to insult county commissioners, but the biggest problem with a lot of the city commissioners is, I'm sorry, not county commissioners, city commissioners, not to insult them, but a lot of them, this is so new. They don't really know what's going on. You talk to a lot of the city commissioners, they don't know. I mean, they, they might sit on the dice and pretend they understand how the comp plan works and Florida statute and what, what a developer is entitled to and what they're not and, you know, what a variance is. But honestly, a lot of times they don't.
No, they don't. They really don't.
And so they're dependent upon the staff and the staff tells them, well, just vote for all this. You might wonder, why does the staff think that? Because they know there's going to be some income from these projects, which will help with raises with a lot of the employees for the cities, et cetera. And so I think equipping city commissioners to make better decisions on growth is something the county can do.
Lake County is a beautiful county. It's Lake County. There's lakes everywhere. There's beautiful. Your parents own a restaurant on a beautiful lake. It seems like every time we're turned, we turn around, we're seeing that every green space that we have, there's a sign up that something else is coming. So like you said, I, I don't know how we get the city people to agree to that. I don't know how we.
Infrastructure too is an issue. I know if you pay attention.
The roads.
Yeah. If you pay attention to like, it's crazy on South 27 going south in Leesburg where it's, you know, Four Lane. And then you have Lake Harris, which, you know, there's kind of that conundrum, what do you do? Because it really should be widened. At any given point, there's a wreck somewhere and it shuts it down. And you can't get back and forth and it's just traffic in general. Last Friday night, I went to my son's soccer game in Orlando and it was, I don't know, 50 something miles from here. It took us two hours, turnpike, you know, to get there. And it was, I, we thought there was a wreck. There was no wreck. It was just traffic, just traffic. And so I, infrastructure wise, I just don't see how we can, can sustain anymore than we, we can't sustain it now.
We love our state. We love being here, but how do we, how do we just slow the growth? How do we slow it and do it smartly and?
Well, a lot of the big projects have been approved in, you know, as amendments to the comprehensive plan. So every city and every county has what they call a comprehensive plan, which is like a big land map of what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do. And every, every one of these applicants that comes before the county or the city is asking essentially for more. We have this, we want more. We want you to change this so we can do more. Usually through the form of what is called a PUD, which is when you just take a big square and then say, we want to do all these things inside. They almost always require more density. And so a lot of times those got rubber stamped. And there was a mentality, you know, coming out of the recession, 2009, 2010, 2011, when a lot of the local leaders were just like, just vote for everything. Because how can we be anti-economic growth when everyone's hurting and the recession is still hurting? But those days are gone. And even though there's been very slow growth under the Biden administration, we're not in a position where the public has a sentiment for just rapid economic development. In fact, it's quite literally the opposite. And if you look at the bond result, the, the result on the vote to flow $50 million in land buying bonds, which came into effect 10 days ago, that in many ways is a mandate and a reflection of the public sentiment, which is that they want less growth, more, more open space. And so we have to respond to that and, and vote no on these comp plan amendments that are burdensome. I mean, maybe something really small, something I'd be open-minded to, but honestly, these are giant. Most time they're gigantic developments.
Developments, yeah.
Wait, and the density, the density is crazy.
Very dense.
They've all got kids that need to go to school.
That's another thing I love. I taught for 10 years and I love every time I hear, oh, this new development with four houses per acre will not affect, you know, the schools won't be overcrowded. They already are. You have schools that are not even done being built. And before a child has stepped foot on the property, they're over capacity.
Yeah.
So I, I've never understood how they get away with saying that, but you know, I don't know. I think there's, there's got to be some type of solution. We can only, we can only sustain so much. And I really, I honestly, I look and I think to myself, if we're going to bring things to the community, you're right. I feel like there needs to be better businesses, quality, not quantity.
Yeah.
Quality.
Absolutely. We have an opportunity to keep Lake County a unique county. Or we can do nothing and it becomes like a banal, meaningless, sort of like rolling suburb of sort of nothingness, which is what like large parts of Seminole County, Osceola County have turned into, where you just drive through them and it's just like the most undistinct place you've ever seen and been in your life. Which of course, as you know, is the opposite of Lake County because of our topography and our lakes and our elevation and our unique towns. We have 14 towns. People don't realize how many more towns that is versus cities, other counties. We have twice, over twice as many towns as Seminole and Osceola County, four times as many as Osceola. And these town centers, if they're, if they're made right, if they're developed right, not just sprawl around them, become like little villages where it continues to make Lake County unique in its walkability and, and, and village type lifestyle, which of course is going to make, is going to stick out so much more regionally. Because all the other counties are just endless sprawl. And Lake County, if we play to the lakes and the towns and the elevation and we're smart about our growth, will have the, I think, the most preferable place to live, certainly in the interior of the state of Florida. You know, statewide, 10, 20 years from now. I think it already is that. But if we don't hold on to it, we'll lose it in two seconds.
Claremont's done a really good job with that.
Yeah, they're downtown.
Downtown area is really nice.
I still argue they, they've sprawled too much.
They have. Oh, they have.
But if they pause it now.
Downtown is really great.
Yeah. And, and by the way, I mean, they, great 10, 20-year plan. If you look at a lot of the green space next to where the, the boat docks are and the, the rowing center, the big rowing center, there's plenty of other opportunities for, create like a hotel down there and extend their downtown. So does Taveri's. I was in Taveri's today and I was looking at how much green space there is.
They have, Taveri's has done a really good job.
And Eustis needs to develop its downtown. But we definitely need to like work directly and put pressure on the cities to, to not sprawl and to develop their downtown. So that needs to be the key.
What's your number one thing you think that you want to tackle coming into being a newly elected commissioners? Or something that stands out?
Well, for me, it's all about immediacy. Like what do we need to do like right now? Like what's the most immediate threat? And for me, I mean, obviously on the growth stuff, there was nothing on this agenda. But for the, for the next ones, it's, it's going to be voting wisely on the growth, voting down on some of these bad projects. But in terms of ordinances or legal changes in the county that I want to focus on first, the first one, which I already had drafted, our, our county attorney Melanie had it all drafted. It was ready for presentation, but it became unnecessary last minute, was a bill that would have made it illegal to smoke marijuana publicly in the county had Amendment Three passed. So that was, today was my first meeting. I was going to have that ready to go day one because I thought it was going to pass. Of course I was against it. I actually really don't think marijuana should be criminalized or whatever. But I think that, that bill would have greatly increased the amount of public smoking marijuana you would have seen to the point where, and it's such a pungent drug. That you would be anywhere downtown Leesburg, you could have been on the other side of the city and you would just smell it because it just, it just holds in the wind. So I was, you know, going to write that up anyways. We did and it didn't pass thankfully because of Governor DeSantis's efforts mostly. It failed and so that became unnecessary. So the next thing that I would do that's like more political or juicy, I guess, or controversial is I want to create a permanent model reporting program here in the county where we direct our county clerk and our sheriff, mostly through the data he gets through the jail, to report illegal immigrants that come into the county because we have an enormous amount. And our constitutional officers, mostly the county clerk and the sheriff, have a lot of information about them. And I want to make sure that we're reporting to state and federal agencies, location whereabouts for a large amount of illegal immigrants that are inhabited in our county. Because we have to have the rule of law and we have to privilege legal immigration over illegal immigration. And our county should play a small but important part in doing that. And having a program where we are reporting that information should make us more than, and we can be more than just a normal partner, but a willing partner in helping the, you know, Donald Trump, Ron DeSantis efforts of fighting back against rampant illegal immigration. We have 800,000 illegals in Florida, you know, and I just think that's a lot. And I think it's obviously probably much more than that than it was four years ago. And so I want to make sure the county plays a role in that. So that's an ordinance that's going to be coming down the chute. So I mean, I'm of the persuasion, we shouldn't have any illegal immigrants. I guess that makes me old fashioned, but I don't think there should be any illegal people coming into the country. You should do it in an orderly fashion.
I completely agree.
For that reason, I think that even in local government, we have to play to the, to the capacity of what we can do, a role in helping the effort of removing illegals. I mean, obviously it's what the country voted for. It's Donald Trump's number one. Member, the chairman of the Republican Party here, I was at the Republican National Convention in Milwaukee. And the Republican National Platform, number one issue, of course, at the top of the list is, is enforcing our laws and deporting illegals. And we have to do that. And we had a party for four years that was in charge of the country that was the opposite. They're, they try to make it easier for people to come in and then to protect them to the detriment of normal working Americans. And then make those Americans, of course, pay the taxpayer money to house those people. And yeah, I mean, there's other national issues that have a county part. The county plays a role in whatever the national topic is. Although in my campaign, a lot of people were saying, you keep talking about these national issues, how do they play a role locally? There's not a single issue that doesn't have something that the federal government does in relation to the state, the county and the city. And DEI is another one. I think we should have policies that are neutral to people's race. I think, I believe I'm colorblind. I believe in colorblindness. And I want to make sure that any vendor doing business with the county doesn't have DEI programs, which is something that we, we stopped at the state level when I was a state legislator. And I, I think we need to go that approach too. So a lot of that is sort of discovery and looking at what the county's spending their money on and making sure we're working with vendors that are race neutral versus race focused, which is what a lot of the DI CRT stuff is.
What do you think you want your, you've, you're only 36, right? So long-term, what's Anthony Sabatini's legacy look like? Because you've already got quite a resume.
For me, it's just about doing what I can to fight for the American way of life and for this country and for Western civilization, no matter what that looks like. I had a blast being a city commissioner. I had a great time doing state, state rep. I think I did some good things there. County, same thing. I was the chairman of the party. I mean, just if there's a role and I can be helpful in that role, I'll do it and try to inspire others to do it too. But at the end of the day, I've never been one of those people that says, well, I want to reach, you know, a certain height. For me, it's not about, you know, a particular office or, or title. I don't really, I really don't care about that. I just want some opportunity to, to, to be effective. So that's really long-term, all I care about is just being in the fight and, and fighting for what I believe in.
Can I ask you something before we go? You're defending January 6th. They really are prisoners. What's going on with that? Where's the?
Sure. So I represent as an attorney, I practice in Florida. I also practice in Washington DC. And over the last two years, I've represented 15 January 6 protesters who've been accused of trespass and some violence, even though they weren't violent. They were accused of just being rioting, just being there was an act of rioting for, for many of them. Super majority of them were not accused of violence, but just rioting, just being there, physically present. And those cases are all over the place. We've had some success with some. We've had convictions with some. I think they should all be pardoned. I think that the Biden administration's use of the DOJ in targeting them was politically motivated to a certain extent. And I think that they, of all people at protests that were unruly or rowdy or whatever, they were targeted much more fiercely or harshly than any in American history. I would say literally.
Because they've been in, they've been behind bars since.
Correct. I have one defendant who's been in prison almost four years without a trial. So yeah, it's.
And he committed no act of violence.
Some would say he did because he was, you know, in a giant mob of people pushing and this.
But he didn't throw a Molotov cocktail into a room. He didn't, you know.
Nobody made direct contact, yeah, with, with an officer law or anything like that. But a lot of those guys were accused of violence just for being in a, in a mob and pushing on a mob. Like, oh, you know, pushing people all the way. I mean, 6,000 people just on the grounds. Another thousand inside the building, 15,000 went on, on the outskirts. So it's like thousands and thousands of people. And they're just accused of rioting in a statute that's almost never used, section 231. And they were just politically targeted. So I think they need to pardon, I think Trump should pardon all or nearly all of them and, and just end that whole chapter and move on, unify the country. I think if those cases continue, then it'll just continue to keep a sore wound open. But yeah, I've been proud to, to do that and represent 15 of them, 15 individuals in 11 cases.
Well, thank you for joining us today, Anthony. We appreciate it. We can't wait to see what you do here in Lake County and beyond. So thank you again for joining us here on the Style Podcast.
Thanks for having me on. It's great to be here.
Thank you for joining us on the Style Podcast. We appreciate our sponsors, Disability Consultants and Lake Center Home Care. We'll see you next time.
Yeah, Anthony, I'll be honest, I'm friends with Anthony. So let me just put that out there socially. But and then there's times where Anthony says and does things and I've been like, oh God. But then I think the one thing I can say about him is that Anthony Sabatini, when he has a conviction, he stands by it. And you don't have to agree with him. You don't have to like his, the way he says it, but he believes it. And when, honestly, I'd rather have someone like that in my corner than someone that's going to just tell me what I want to hear.
He's done, he's done a lot considering he's only 36. His resume is long.
He must be exhausted.
He's, yeah, he's not going to, he's not going to stop. He's going to keep going. So I, I think that we may have had a, a future celebrity, big celebrity on our podcast.
And then I hope this isn't inappropriate. He is only 36. That might be part of it. But I noticed these things now at almost half a century. He's got really good skin. I should have asked him if he used anything. I'm serious.
He's a baby.
Is that what it is?
He's a baby. The older you get.
He's 36, literally. I'm like, he's got to use something special. I'm like, I need to call him, call his wife Francesca and find out what it is.
She'll know, but whatever his wife puts in the shower is what he uses.
I was really impressed. No, and he's really smart and, again, he cares about, he cares about his belief system. He has a belief system.
We're going to be able to say, we had him on our show back then.
Back then. Yeah, one day.
Back then.